Alright guys, alright guys. We're gonna go ahead, we're gonna get started. Sometimes, we may lock the room if there's a lot of coming and going. So, please try to hang out. If you are in the process of playing another game, or your attention is distracted somewhere, we don't want to hear about how you bullshit jungler didn't help you leash blue. Get out. We don't want to listen to it. This is a business meeting, first and foremost, and secondary, um, a planning meeting. It's an opportunity for you guys as individuals to chime in. And I'll give you some more information on that in just a second. So, we're going to start doing this town hall meeting. We're gonna have a public town hall meeting every quarter. At the end of every quarter, the leadership staff and I got together, or are going to get together, and figure out what we've done and what we need to do. Put together some statistics, some results, and things like that, and we're gonna share these things with you. So, for starters, welcome. Thank you for joining us. All of you guys are obviously pretty dedicated members of the community, willing to take some time out of your Saturday to discuss our future. We really appreciate that. On behalf of your teammates, your leaders, I thank you for showing up and taking some time out of your day to participate in this. As I mentioned earlier, this is your chance to help shape our future. Of course, you know, we have some things out there, like the suggestion box and things like that, where you can provide some input and let us know about things that you think should need to be improved. But this is a good opportunity for us all to kind of be in the same room, and share our ideas and thoughts, and see what we can come up with them. So, as I mentioned earlier, secondary, you know, first and foremost, it's a business meeting. Secondary, it's a, you know, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Help me out here. A group think, a think tank. Something like that. I can't, that's not- Brainstorming session! Thank you! Cube to the rescue! So, please be very respectful. There will be no talking over each other or arguing. If anybody is bad mannered, or joking around too much, you will be removed from the room, and you will be asked not to come back. I am very serious about that. Each section that I have, we've got about eight, eight or nine different sections. It's gonna take about 10, 15 minutes apiece, so that way we try to stay on schedule. I'm hoping to have everybody out of here in about two hours, hopefully. If we can't wrap up a chat in the allotted time for that section of the presentation, then we will make arrangements to continue the conversation at a later time. Or in the off-chance, let's say like, the League of Legends discussion gets really long. We don't want the Dota guys to have to wait, so we'll go ahead and, you know, League of Legends guys can do, I would call a breakout session, where they would just go and continue their conversation in another room. For those of us, or for those, for the members who haven't been able to watch today, we are going to put this up on our YouTube channel after everything's all said and done. So, that's kind of the, uh, that's kind of how everything's gonna flow. Again, we've got a target schedule of two hours or so. We're gonna go over the budget. Daniel's also gonna do a brief presentation if he's here over the guides forum. I don't see him right now, but he told me he may be a little late. I told him to get on in about 10 minutes, at the worst, so hopefully we'll see him. Recruitment and social media is going to be led by Atlas. He's gonna talk about some of the things that we've got going on. I've got some statistics to help him out. Also, our Twitch and YouTube. We're gonna be talking about our casting department and some of those things, tournaments. And then we're gonna talk about our individual competitive departments: League of Legends, Dota 2, and StarCraft. I wanted to put League of Legends and Dota 2, oops. I wanted to put League of Legends and Dota 2 first, so that, because I do anticipate StarCraft being a chunk of our conversation. And I didn't think it was fair for the smaller sections of our community having to wait for us to talk about StarCraft before they can talk about their shit. So, any questions before we move forward? And I start sharing with you guys how we did in our last fiscal quarter with our budget and everything?
Wait, wait, Marsh. What's a fiscal quarter?
Um, a year is divided up into four fiscal quarters. You have January through March, April through June, July through August, Sept- wait. No, I'm sorry, July through September, and then October through December. So, it's a way for us to kind of divide up the year. It's what a lot of businesses use to keep track of their profits and losses and things like that. Any other questions before we get going?
Wait, so, if we meet in October now, is this for the previous one?
This is, this is, yes, this meeting is in response to our third quarter results.
Alright.
Alright, so, um, as many of you know, we've been doing really well in regards to our fundraising, giving out tournament prizes and things like that. In the third quarter, as you see, we spent nearly $500. We took in about $792. Please keep in mind that, um, we really, this is kind of misleading. We didn't actually make a profit this last quarter. We broke even, because we had a starting balance of about $290 something. We've got some new expenses that we haven't had to pick up in the past, such as our TeamSpeak. We're also looking to get some legal representation for us down the road. But I'll talk more about future plans. As you can see, or I'll talk more about future plans here in a bit. As you can see, we've got quite a bit of money left over for our various departments. Whenever somebody makes a donation, they can indicate how they want it to be spent. So, let's say you have 20 bucks, but you want it to be spent on tournaments, or you want to contribute to our legal fee, or our legal fund, things like that. You can allocate how those donations go, and that's why you see everything broken down like this into different departments. The, um, production team actually did not go through and spend 50 bucks. The production team was given $50, which they reallocated to the legal fund. The marketing, that was all spent on custom t-shirts for individual donors who helped us be a presence at Megcon 2013. Everything else is pretty cut and dry. Any questions in regards to our budget summary? Sounds good. Alright, so, of course, none of this would be possible without the awesome support of donors. Shoutout to Sergeant Laman, our top donor in the last quarter. Donated over $300, so close to 400. I came in second. Whitesaber, Izanagi, Tristan aka Strife, Atlas, Urbman, Man. Gentlemen, I don't know who he is in the community, but Frankie R., Lukewas Beer, Wakow, Daniel68pm, Masakoey K., again, I don't know his forum name, Alex, and Richard M., again, don't know his forum name, so abbreviated the last name for their privacy and security. Nothing would happen without these people, guys. And to be completely honest with you, over the course of 90 days, this is a very small list. We can't always, you know, we can't always rely on, you know, Sergeant Laman's, and Morse's, and Izanagis, and Atlases to help us carry everything forward. We do need donations. If you are interested in setting something up that, if you'd like to become a regular or sustaining member, we now have the option on our PayPal, where you can set it up for an automatic monthly contribution. Please do so if you feel so inclined. The more money we have, the more stuff that we can do. And that kind of brings us up to the future plans. We want to do more tournaments. We also want to bring you guys some more perks as members. We're in the process of launching a t-shirt store. We're also trying to pursue more traditional sponsorships. We're kicking around the idea of premium memberships. And we are also continuously raising money for our legal fund to help secure our future as a business, as a legal business entity, as a nonprofit organization. Um, so, please, if you can, support Infinity Gaming today. And if you make a donation of at least $22.50, and put in the comments "t-shirt", then you will get a pre-order for a t-shirt. We've got some cool stuff coming up with Ownage. For more information on that, please check out the store page on the website. That's pretty much all I had. Let me double-check. Yep, that's pretty much all I had for, um, the budget, and, you know, what we're going through, and what we would like to see. We need some more funds to help offset the cost for the TeamSpeak server. Eventually, we're gonna have to start absorbing the cost for our website and things along those lines. So, we really need those donations, guys. Please don't make me beg. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor up to questions, concerns about our, about our financial situation. Which is actually pretty good. Point of the town-
Does this include-
Go ahead, sorry.
Does the earnings that you showed us, does that also include what we're getting from Twitch per se? Like, just random donations we may or may not be getting from Twitch?
We don't get, we don't get anything from Twitch. We're not a partner with Twitch. But if you're asking about like, um, how the stream team has, you know, we all have donation buttons now at the bottom of our pages, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, like, when we're doing a tournament or something, is, is like, just random people that are donating as we're like putting on a tournament for us, you know, per se? Is that being shown here in the budget, or?
Yes. All income was reported, and all expenses were reported and itemized. The leadership staff has access to an itemized full budget, that they're able to comb over, and make sure I didn't fuck anything up. I am our bookkeeper, for those of you that didn't know. When somebody makes a donation through the Twitch page, all it's actually doing is redirecting them to our donate page on the website. So, anything that comes through in that manner is tracked, just like if you made a donation directly from the homepage. All of it's tracked. Next question?
Iconic wants to know, what is the difference between premium, well, what exactly does premium membership entail?
You know, that's a really good question. Um, we've been, we've had premium memberships in the past, back in Infinity Gaming 1.0. And some of the things that included were, um, uh, extra perks on the forums, like your own, you know, like a, you know, a premier member lounge, or premium member lounge, um, special, you know, little ditties. The problem that we're having right now is we can't figure out what is a good compensation for that, and what would be a good price for that. So, if you guys would like to toss around some ideas right now, I would, I'd love to hear them. I mean, what are some things that you would like to see out of a premium membership, Iconic? Oh, Brink says, uh, they used to, they used to have replays. Replay packs available. That's pretty cool.
I don't really like the idea of premium membership per se.
Go on.
It feels a lot like, uh, at some point where it's like, it gets mandatory, or it's easily something that changes to be mandatory. I mean, I have no problem with donating, but it's not about the money, it's just about the principle. Um, but if, if you really want to do it, what about like priority coaching or something? I don't know the details of how you do it with coaching here, but there's like a signup rate or whatever? They want that maybe?
Um, Vampy, to address one of your concerns, Infinity Gaming will always be a not-for-profit, community-based organization. The idea behind the premium memberships is to give members extra perks to encourage regular donations. There are a lot of reservations. There's a lot of, um, good and bad thoughts that come from this idea. But it is something that we're interested in, but we wouldn't exactly know how to fill it out, or what would be, you know, what you guys would like to see come out of it. But it would never become like a requirement, or, you know, an elitist kind of thing. It's just a perk, you know, a thank you for your sustaining membership of Infinity Gaming. So, kind of address your concern there, Iconic?
I suppose so. I'm still a bit skeptical, but-
Well, and this, if, if anything, this is in its infancy stage. Only a few of us have been talking about it. That's why I wanted to bring it up. So, yeah, get some of your thoughts and opinions on it. So, thank you for chiming in. Anybody else have questions in regards to the upcoming t-shirt store? Um, you know, plans for future tournaments? Anything?
Any chance of upping the tournaments for League? Like, more of them?
I have a-
Is that a possibility?
Let's, uh, let's- Yeah, there's a set aside time to talk about tournaments, so we can bring that up later.
I got a question, um, about, you were saying for perks and stuff for a premium membership?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe like, you know, the Infinity Gaming in-house, you would be able to get a set amount of points for being a donor?
Personally, I don't, um, oh shit, hold on a second.
Didn't you run into the same problems that a lot of video games have, where it's pay to win?
Hold on a second.
And you also come into an error of, Joeeb, are, are you talking about the, like, the Zeke League?
I mean, the Zeke League.
Like, the, the league on Zeke, tournament league?
No, I'm talking about like the end of the month.
Hey, I'm in the middle of streaming a really important event. Do not, uh, do not reset the router or anything for like the next two hours. I'm not running, I'm not running that much. I'm doing the same stuff that I do every night. I just didn't want you to reset the router on me.
Well, on that note about the, you know, about it being, you know, pay to win-
It might be, but I gotta go. I just, I didn't want you to reset the router on me. Alright, thank you.
You know, and maybe like cap it off at like, maybe five extra points or something like that?
I am against, I am against that idea. Um, pay to win?
What league are we talking about here right now?
Well-
Joeeb, what league are you talking about?
Uh, in-house.
Which in-house?
I am not going, I will never award game points, or tournament points, or anything along those lines to somebody who provided financial backing. That's not cool. Uh, that's not fair, that's not fair to maybe some of our minor members, or some of our members who are unemployed and can't afford to make donations. You're basically telling them, you gotta, you gotta pay to play, and that's, that's not cool.
Alright.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. Something like that could be useful. But not with the current leagues that we're running right now.
Alright.
Thank you, Joeeb. Alright, we're sitting at 20 minutes now, after the hour, 21, I think. We're gonna go ahead and move on. If anybody has any other questions or concerns about the budget, or ideas on how you think you can help increase our profitability, et cetera, please go ahead and chime in in the discussion forum, where you can find more detailed printout of our current financial status. So, the next section was gonna be on the, the guides section. Is Daniel here? I don't see him. Yeah, I don't see him.
I don't have Saturdays. He, yeah, Saturdays, he goes into the city for work or something, I don't know.
He told me he was gonna try to make some special arrangements today, but I guess he wasn't able to do so. So, as you can see, guys, I pulled up the forum. We recently renamed the guides section, Strategy. And this is set up for members only, so random people outside of the community will not be able to check our, uh, check our stuff. All they gotta do is apply, though, and validate, and they'll have access to it. But we restructured it specifically in the StarCraft section. Now, if you go to StarCraft, you'll see we've got, uh, just general discussion, which redirects you back to the StarCraft general discussion thread. Then Protoss, Terran, and Zerg, so it's broken up by race. And then you can, if you need help, if you've got some replays you wanna post, or you got a guide, this is the place to go. Daniel's been doing a really good job, uh, keeping track of this, keeping it organized, helping it grow. As you can see here, um, oops, as you can see here, there are over 25 threads with over 100 posts. But guys, there's a lot of opportunity to grow in that department. That's also something that's really attractive when we're recruiting, is to be able to say, yeah, you know, and we've got a guides section, it's pretty, pretty detailed. I'm not, personally, I'm not at the point where I would feel comfortable, um, advertising our guides section as being badass, because it's just, there's just not enough. We have quality, but we need quality and quantity when it comes to this department. So, uh, I don't really know what else Daniel wanted me to cover. He's been doing a really good job. If you guys could give him some assistance, I'm sure he would appreciate it. Uh, he does a lot of stuff outside of Infinity, and, uh, still finds time to help us out. If you have a favorite build, a replay, you need help with something, please utilize that forum just so we can help it grow. And who knows, maybe somebody else is having the same problem, but doesn't really know how to address it, and your post could be the key to them starting to win TVT. You never know.
Got one question about the replay. Do you just upload through GG Tracker?
Yes, and we would prefer if you, uh, use the replay from, uh, replay pack from GG Tracker. Pull that up for you here real quick. As you can see, there's nothing in here, but if you wanted to, just start new. Wow, internet's running really slow. Sorry, guys. Herp, but derp. And then copy paste the URL.
Okay, I was, there's three replays under Terran.
Nice. Look at Atlas, being a boss, getting shit done. Love it. Love it, love it. Yeah, this is the kind of stuff that we're looking for, guys. So, anything you can do to help build that, please do so. Thoughts, questions?
Looks like a really good thing to grow.
Yeah, it, uh, it's one of those things that there's, there's really no bad way to help it grow. I mean, unless you're being a troll. Don't be a troll.
I don't want to touch it.
(laughing) Graven. Um, any other questions on, uh, guides and strategy? Alright, well, in closing on this topic, um, I just want to remind you guys that there's also a section on there for League of Legends, and there's also a section down there for Dota. Uh, as you guys know, Daniel is primarily a StarCraft player, and a lot of, um, a lot of the leadership's focus is on that side. We very much would like to see more League of Legends and Dota stuff being brought up and discussed in that forum. Uh, so if you are a player or a member of those parts of our community, please chime in, be part of the conversation, help your fellow members learn more about the game that you love. I'm gonna go ahead and pass the stick over to Atlas. Who's gonna go over our, uh, social media and recruitment information.
Okay, first off, I'm going to hit social media. Uh, as you see, Morse has all the information up there. Uh, I posted LinkedIn, and Teamspeak chat. Basically, it provides you with a link to everything we have. Um, besides Zeke and Twitch, our Facebook is doing well right now. We had 120 likes. Um, and our Twitter is actually, we've gained roughly 10, 15 followers over the past few days, so that's always good. Um, social media is a big thing we need to focus on, as we have been turned down by sponsors before due to lack of a large following basis on social media. Um, one big thing I want to hit on right now is our YouTube. Currently, the most popular thing on YouTube is Morsa Course. There has not been a single StarCraft game from Sunday Mass, an Open, a Clan War, or anything posted on there in two months. So, that is something that we need to improve on, um, and something that needs to get done. Because when you look at the YouTube right now, there's Morsa Course, and then there's games from two months ago.
We'll be, uh, I'll address that more here in just a moment, Atlas. I'm sorry to cut you off. That's one of the things Izanagi wanted me to share with everybody.
Alrighty, that's it for YouTube. Uh, YouTube is a big thing we're gonna have to focus on, because at the rate we're going, Morse's video on how to make a Twitch highlight will have made us $100 in about 10 years, maybe?
If even?
Yeah.
Right on track.
Right on track, who said that? Let me show you my 10-year plan!
Facebook, we're doing good there. Um, we're getting short announcements out. Uh, but we're still getting out there, and plus we have 120 likes, which is always good. Um, another thing I want to bring up is we've recently started posting events on Reddit. Like, just something short and sweet, like, one hour from this post. "StarCraft 32-man bracket starts. If you want to sign up, here's the link. If you want to watch the stream, here's the link." It's one thing actually we did, we've done with the past three Sunday Masses, and we've seen higher player turnout, so that's a really good thing. And we're hoping to keep that up in the future. Um, like I said, Twitter, we're getting up there in followers. Um, Twitch, last night we gained 24, 25 followers. We're also starting to see more Twitch chat interaction, which is always a good thing. It means there's more discussion, more livelihood, and it means you're more likely to stay and watch the entire live stream. Um, now, I'm gonna get down into recruitment. Guys, if you want to look at recruitment, basically, go down the teams on StarCraft. You can look at who's applying for what. Um, the EU side right now is experiencing the exponential growth that NA did when we first kicked off. So, they're starting to get an influx of members right now. Um, if the trend follows like it should, we should see that slack off just a little bit in the coming months, but I'm not exactly too sure. Um, B-team recruitment is still going fine. It's going good. They're all coming in. Um, Academy, we're getting the platinums we want, but we're not getting the high-quality diamonds that we need. And the same thing goes for Masters recruitment. Um, basically, we're having a really hard time getting diamonds and Masters to join. Um, one reason is if you see a Master who's looking for a team, you PM him and say, "Hey there, uh, are you, like, you still looking for a team there, dude?" They'll often come back with a response of, "How many GMs do you have?" At this time, we have zero GMs, so, uh-
Yeah, it's either how many GMs you have, or what are you gonna give me?
Yeah.
It's kind of sad.
Another thing, when we're trying to recruit Masters, um, Vampy was telling me about this. Uh, a lot of players look at us like we are casual. And that's what really turns them off from joining us rather than going to another team. They, they'd rather go to the small 30-man team of, with more Masters, than join our team of 90-plus with fewer Masters. Do you guys see where I'm coming from with this?
We don't have a good ratio of Masters to non-Masters.
Well, it's not just that, it's also the culture that we have, being a community-based organization. They're, they're looking at it from one angle, and when you're talking to somebody and trying to recruit them, and if that's an objection that comes up, you know, one of the things that you can mention is, "Hey dude, if you come play with us, you join up on our team, you immediately have 400 fans." You immediately have a casting department, a production comp, you know, like, we've, we have the tools, we have the numbers to make it happen. And one of the things that I run into when I go to LANs, um, like I was talking to somebody that's in the Academy for, uh, fuck, I can't remember.
Impulse, I think?
Yeah, it was at, was it Impulse? Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, because you sent me the roster, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah, um, he was talking about how those, you know, those bigger organizations, the monsters of esports, if you will, they're not as organized as us. There's very little communication for the diamonds and the, and the low mid-masters, and they kind of feel left out. Infinity Gaming can offer them a very family, um, atmosphere. But at the same time, we also have to keep in mind that these guys are high-level players, and they're high-level players because they take the game very seriously. And some of them get turned off by a lot of the dicking around that even myself is guilty of. So, keep those things in mind when you're trying to recruit, uh, a higher-league player.
And this is something that's really affecting player retention, because if we're not getting high-quality players in, we're not getting the high-quality practice partners needed for our best players. And that's a result, as you can see, with the loss of Herb last night.
Urbman left?
Yes.
We'll talk about this later. Sad Panda! (laughing) Um, uh, anything else that you wanted to add, Atlas? I was gonna steal the floor from you and cover a few things that I wanted to, uh, on this topic.
Any questions? About recruitment?
I actually have one thing about the just recruitment thing in general, and, you know, social media. Pyro Panda was on TeamSpeak not that long ago, and he said he's hopefully gonna be back relatively soon, like within the next month or so.
That'll be really exciting.
So, we should have our, you know, marketing and, you know, social media- So we should have our, you know, marketing and, you know, social media guy back hopefully soon.
As of right now, Atlas is our Twitter guy, I'm our default Facebook guy, there are a few other members of the leadership team that have moderator access to our Facebook. Um, please, if you have access to our Facebook, feel free to chime in and, and make comments and do stuff. If you are a moderator and you're making a post as Infinity Gaming, let's limit it to, you know, a couple posts a day. I mean, nobody wants to be a fan of a Facebook page that puts 40 things on their newsfeed a day, you know? The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, out of those, uh, we'll take Facebook for example. Literally 10%, I kid you not, 10% of the Facebook likes, 12 of the people that are on Facebook, are my personal friends outside of Infinity Gaming. They're family members, friends from high school, coworkers, and, uh, they've joined just because I've asked them to. I've told them about our, our struggle for sponsorships and things like that, and, uh, and they've decided to like our Facebook. I would very much encourage all of you, next time you're on our Facebook page, or maybe go to it right now, and send out an invite to everybody that's on your friends list. That within itself, if everybody does that, should get us 30, 40, 50 likes within a 48-hour period. So if you haven't sent out an invitation to your friends and family on Facebook about our Facebook, I recommend that you do so, it's really gonna be helpful. Uh, again, if you're not following our Facebook, Twitter, or any of the other social media, YouTube, that kind of stuff, you need to do so, please click that link, Atlas, if you could post it again in the chat here on TeamSpeak, that would be awesome. Uh, we'd really appreciate that. I mean, these are numbers that we need to start getting some, some big money. Uh, we're moving that way very, we're moving that way, but we're moving very slowly. And, uh, I'd like for us to move a lot faster, so it's not 10 years down the road that we finally have, you know, 500 Facebook likes. That's really about all I had to add for this. Um, shoutouts to, uh, everybody for your recruitment and everything. As you can see, we have nearly 500 members now, uh, registered on the forums. We have so much TeamSpeak activity that we had to increase the cost of our TeamSpeak, which, uh, uh, or increase the size of our TeamSpeak, which has caused us to increase the size. And our website, right now, gets about 3,500 visitors a month. And our website, those little ads that I added at the bottom of our, our pages on the website, are actually making us more money than our, um, are actually making us more money than our YouTube is. So, keep on recruiting, tell your friends, tell your family, tell your neighbors, you know? They don't have to be a gamer to like Infinity Gaming or support what you're doing as a member of our community. Questions?
Do you have to have a Facebook, I'm a total newbie at Facebook, do you have to have a Facebook to support INF?
You have to have a Facebook in order to support INF on Facebook. But you do not need a Facebook to be a member of Infinity Gaming.
You also need a Twitter to, you know, follow Infinity Gaming on Twitter.
Exactly.
But, I am bored, can I just make a shit-ton of Facebooks and continuously like Infinity Gaming?
No.
Yes.
No spam. That will get, that will get us reported.
Okay, I won't do that then.
As much as we would like the idea, Atlas instantly said yes, but yeah, no. You know, Facebook's actually moderating that.
Qual, quality over quantity. I'm sorry, didn't mean to speak over you, go ahead.
What if I do it like three times a week? Is that, is that able to fly under the radar?
Do you have mod?
Yeah.
Graven?
I don't think so.
Then you would be making a post as an individual, and you can do whatever the fuck you want.
Alright!
Next? Alright, moving along. Uh, the next topic, uh, I'm covering for Izanagi, um, although Shadow is here, so maybe Shadow might want to take this, uh, take this role. Um, Shadow, you wanna explain what's going on in the casting department and how, uh, the community can help you guys out? Or what you're doing to help the community, etc.?
Sure, well, first and foremost, thank you guys. But, as you guys may or may not be aware, we are, you know, struggling to get casters. Last night, we had, you know, two casters that generally haven't casted before, casting our league tournament. They did good, but we definitely need more, and we also need more casters for our StarCraft 2 tournaments, otherwise you're gonna be seeing the same, you know, three, four people that we've seen months before. Like, you'll see myself, Morse, Izanagi, maybe even Atlas casting all the events instead of, you know, having a wider variety of casters. I've tried looking on Team Liquid, I've tried Reddit, I've gotten a lot of hits, but, you know, nobody's actually stuck with it and gone ahead and, you know, talked to Izanagi and sat down with Izanagi and spoken to him. So, if you guys could, you know, tell your friends that might be interested in casting, you know, something along that line, say, "Hey, you know, the community I'm part of is looking for casters." You know, go ahead and send them Izanagi's way, because I'm clearly busy at this point in time. But Izanagi is the head of the department, and we just need more people to, you know, again, split amongst, well, split the tournaments amongst. Otherwise, again, you'll be running myself and all the other casters that we actually have here. You'll be running us ragged with, you know, four or five different tournaments over the weekend. And if there's, say, like a league tournament that weekend as well, yeah, the league tournaments take about nine hours. And we're between seven to nine hours, StarCraft tournaments don't take that long, but...
There's a, there's a reason you don't see Day 9 and DJ Wheat sitting in front of that booth for the entire Saturday afternoon of MLG. They, they swap out, cat, for those of you that don't do casting, it's very tiresome. And, uh, we need some help getting some people in here. Uh, I know that some folks have some reservations about working with Izanagi, I know he's a little rough around the edges, um, just like I can be at times, and please don't let that discourage you. Uh, there are other members of the leadership staff that can help you out, and you don't have to like somebody to work with them.
Correct, and, you know, like, the league side of the casting, for instance, I'm taking the full helm on that. I'm talking to the two casters that we had last night, you know, scheduling caster practices with them as often as possible. And so, it's not just Izanagi, it's also me whenever I get that chance, which I'm trying to make it at least, you know, two, three days a week that I'm able to sit down with people and help them cast. We also just need more people to be on the production side of the tournaments as well. Last night was a big eye-opener for me on how many things can mess up during a league tournament.
And we'll talk more about the administrative side of tournaments in a minute.
Yeah, but, I mean, other than that, that's really it, we just need more to be a part of the casting department that want to be casters and have the drive to be casters with the dedicate, you know, the time to dedicate to it. We don't want people that are gonna be like, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll help," that are here for two, three weeks and then fall off the face of the earth. We need those consistent, or otherwise, we're gonna be in the same rut again, you know, the next physical quarter.
Yep. I think of it this way, you know, if you guys ran a business and you had to retrain somebody every, you know, six weeks, you get pretty old pretty fast, we need solid, dedicated folks. Uh, anything else that you wanted to add, um, to this topic, Shadow? I've got some points that I wanted to throw in, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Go ahead, throw in your point.
Alright, so I just want to remind everybody that we have three weekly shows that happen all the time like clockwork. Uh, with the exception of Morse, of course, I'm usually late, or I just half-ass it, I apologize for that, I'm gonna be a little more professional about that going forward. Uh, but, uh, Morse of course takes place every Monday night at 8:00 PM Central Standard Time, an hour before Day 9 goes live. And then, um, on Wednesdays, we have Death by a Thousand Games hosted by Izanagi, he is live streaming and playing through 1,000 games. He's currently on game five, I think, I wanna say, four or five, uh, of his 1,000-game marathon. Uh, so please tune in to support that stuff, and of course, you know, the, we're always broadcasting the Sunday Mass on Sundays, and that takes place, uh, about when you get home from church, or about nine o'clock in the evening if you're over in the EU. Uh, at this time, we, we, as some of you shouldn't, or as most of you should know, we have, uh, the capability to promote your stream on our homepage, if you're a member of the community and you would like your stream to be up on the homepage, all you gotta do is send me a private message, let me know your stream, and, uh, we'll go from there. That process is gonna change in the near future, some of you, um, casters and streamers are probably already aware of this. But right now, we're running a, uh, a beta, uh, testing for stream requirements. And what we would like to see is for everybody to have these panels on the bottom of their stream. We eventually are going to make it a requirement. And if you don't have these four panels on the bottom of your, on the bottom of your Twitch page, then we will remove you from the stream team, we'll remove you from the homepage. We're trying to give everybody ample notice about this, I've been running this beta for, uh, I wouldn't say about a month now. We'll be closing the beta, uh, as we've worked out a majority of the kinks here soon, there will be a enrollment period. Basically, a quick warning of, "Hey, everybody, this is now required, this is the deadline." And then once the deadline hits, if somebody isn't on there, then they're gonna have to go, they're gonna get removed, and they'll have to go through the process all over again after they add the panels. If you're wondering why should I do it now, instead of waiting until it's required, uh, right now, if you get in on it, you get a special award for the forums to display that you're helping with our stream team. And if you're a StarCraft 2 player, you will also get a personalized, custom in-game overlay for you when you're streaming. The only other thing to, to add is, as Shadow touched on earlier, um, we need help on the production side of things, guys. Um, there's more than just being a caster, we need people to edit, help edit our YouTube, or help edit our VODs on Twitch so they can be uploaded to YouTube. We need, um, people who can help us upload things to YouTube, these people need to be established members, people that have been with us for a long time, and that we know are trustworthy, because it's, it's a high-security access kind of thing. If that's something you're considering, and you're interested in that responsibility, it is a very big responsibility, and we really would like your help, but we are going to be picky about it. One of the reasons we're falling behind is because most of the leaders have too much on their plate to focus on the YouTube. And we don't have any volunteers that we trust enough to give the username and password to our YouTube, because it also ties into a bunch of other stuff. So if, uh, that's something you're interested in, please, uh, shoot me or Izanagi or Shadow or Atlas, uh, PM, so we can, uh, get ahold of you and talk to you about opportunities for you to help us grow on our YouTube, uh, slash, you know, uh, production side. So that's pretty much it for the stream team, um, casters and whatnot, uh, thoughts, questions, concerns?
Am I trusted enough, because I may actually be, like, partially willing to do that?
Graven, do you want me to embarrass you in public?
So is I now?
We'll talk later, dude, but, but I will probably take you up on that. Uh, please send me a private message.
Uh, Cube looked like he wanted to ask something.
Um, correction, Atlas does not have the access that I thought he did.
I don't either, by the way.
Alright. If you think you should ha, if you're a leader and you think you should have access to that, send me a private message as well. Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
Is editing hard?
No, it's really easy, you pull up a, uh, a YouTube, actually, you know what, there's a really cool YouTube video in our YouTube on how to do it.
It's our most popular video.
If I watch it, I'm gonna break the streak, man, it needs 10 years for a hundred.
Um, it, it's very easy, uh, you access your dashboard, which will give you ash, access to Infinity Gaming's dashboard as an editor. You'll pull up a video, um, let's say from last night's League of Legends tournament, there's a slider on the bottom. You move the slider to the start of the match, you move the other slider to the end of the match, and then you click a button that says "Create Highlight", you give it a title and a description, and then from there, um, somebody else will be able to upload it to YouTube.
Alright, now if I was asleep while it was on, and I like, didn't wake up for like, a couple hours, so it's like...
You can, you can, you can jump around, you can jump around in the video, you don't have to sit there and watch it. Um, it usually takes about an hour to chop up four to five hours of content, depending on if it's a StarCraft or a League of Legends event.
No, no, I meant was like, say I didn't get it exactly on the time that it was meant to be done, will I be completely yelled at and trashed out about it, or?
Yes, but, yes, but we will still love you.
Okay. Alright, I'll probably do that, I'll end up doing that then.
I think if, as long as it's like within half, like 30 seconds or so of the time you posted, it should be fine, because 30 seconds isn't a huge issue.
Yeah, there's a big difference, yeah, there's a big difference between cutting off the intro to a match and starting the match two minutes in.
Oh, no, I just meant like, say I was asleep the day that the tournament happened, so I didn't cut it up that day. Like, could I do it like the next day and not get trashed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright, then yeah, I'll...
Yeah, no, no, no.
And we can talk more, we can talk more about, um, the role and the responsibilities and how that would play out at a later time, for the sake of, um, time, no, no, you're, you're not doing anything wrong, Graven, just trying to keep us focused on track. A lot of people gotta go to work later and things like that, so trying to be respectful of everybody's time. Uh, I appreciate your enthusiasm, I look forward to, uh, reading your private message.
The message would be on the forums, right?
Yes.
Could I have to ask you how to do that later?
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, so, um, next topic of discussion? Tournaments! Guys, um, we, on the StarCraft side, is going really strong. Uh, of course, as you guys know, every Sunday, we have the Sunday Mass. We're also running in-house events, like, um, the, the B-Team League. Um, we would like to do more random in-house tournaments. If you are a member of a competitive StarCraft team and you would like for your team to run an in-house event that's just for you guys, talk to your team captain, get that organized, um, or lieutenant. It can be as complicated or as easy as you want. Uh, Dracarath, for example, he's putting together an actual tournament staff for the EU side. They're gonna start running, uh, regular events that are gonna mirror what we're doing in North America. And, uh, he's also talking about running an in-house event where all of his players, if they wanna play, chip in two bucks, and the winner of the tournament takes the money, things like that. So you can be as creative with these events as you'd like, as far as the in-house events. If you're interested in helping out with, uh, Sunday Mass or one of our monthly opens or anything like that, please let me or another member of the leadership staff know. We can never have too many people trying to recruit players while the events are going on. Uh, we can, never have too many people keep an eye on Twitch chat and things like that. So if you're not playing in an event, and you're not practicing, you don't really feel like, you know, uh, training, then, uh, come help us out, run some tournaments, make sure everybody has some good fun. We have a tournament league going on right now for the StarCraft side. Every time somebody participates in an event, they earn points. At the end of the StarCraft 2 season, we're gonna take those points and we're going to, uh, run a, uh, and then we're gonna run a final, just like we did at the end of the last StarCraft season. The prize pool, again, is gonna be 100 bucks up for grabs. Uh, we are still looking for some more, uh, donors and sponsors for that, as we are short of that $100 goal at this time. But the season doesn't end until November, so we do have some time to make that happen. Our tournament group on Zeke has over 400 members. There are ways for me to, as an, as an admin of Z33K, or Zeke.com, uh, I can, I can message everybody in our group. So if you have a specific event or something like that that you want promoted to all the people that follow us on Zeke, let us know, we can make that happen. Um, I feel like there was one other thing I wanted to talk about with StarCraft stuff. Alright, forget it. Uh, as of right now, League of Legends is only running one monthly tournament. Uh, the reason we have it set up like this is just because we didn't know how hard it was going to be, what kind of pool we are gonna have, how many people are gonna participate, etc. After last night's tournament and the tournament we had, uh, this summer, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to move forward on a regular monthly basis. We're provided Riot prizing from Riot for the events, there is an application process for that, and we have to notify them 30 days before the tournament is ran. In the past, we've had some problems with Riot actually paying out. If we have problems again, then we will scrap Riot prizing and go back to, uh, raising money for, uh, just cash prizes. We'd like to keep the Riot prizing, but they're just, sometimes they're inconsistent, and people don't realize that, people don't realize that Riot's the one giving out the points, not Infinity Gaming. And it can be a potential, um, reputation risk for us. And if that becomes the case, then we're gonna have to put a squash to it. Some people talked earlier about, uh, running more than one, uh, League of Legends tournament a month. Uh, I am personally, uh, down for that, but they have to be done right, and they've gotta be, well, they've gotta be done right. We have certain, uh, requirements in our partnership with Zeke, that tournaments have to be started... That tournaments have to be started on time, they have to be ran in a certain manner and with a certain, um, decorum in order for us to maintain our partnership with them. Uh, Dota 2, we currently aren't running any Dota 2 events, but, uh, Lane from, uh, Zeke has expressed to me that, uh, the Dota 2 scene on Zeke is expanding. This may be a really good way for us to draw in more Dota 2 and League of Legends teams. But, uh, yeah, that's pretty much what's on the agenda. Do we wanna start doing a Dota 2 event? I don't know. Uh, I don't think there's enough, uh, Dota 2 players. I asked Bert, Illafan and, um... Big N to join us, but unfortunately, it looks like they couldn't make it. Uh, those are our big leaders for Dota and we'll talk more about that actual department in a moment.
Well, uh, I, 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 I hate to cut you off right there, um.
Go, go.
If, i- if you go on Zeke right now, um, there's actually a Dota tournament going on in one week. Now, mind you, the prize is a hundred dollars, but they have roughly fifty teams signed up.
Nice. But I mean, like, um, is there, you know, with, within us? You know, I don't play Dota. I don't, I don't wanna run a Dota tournament.
I, I would have no idea how to admin that.
Exactly. That's what I mean. Like, we, we need the Dota community to run these tournaments if they want them to exist.
I have experience. I could do it. I, I used to play Dota a lot with my friends, like all-time classic Dota, but I honestly don't think we have a large enough community to do that.
Not only that, we, we don't have the casters to do that because that would just be me solo casting. Cause we don't have any Dota 2 casters at this point in time.
Yeah, there's the, there's the Dota squad that hangs out down there and it, there's not a lot of internal expansion in that matter. I just don't think we have like... The community to do it.
Isn't there like five of them?
Let's, this conversation is drifting more towards the Dota community and not about the potential for additional tournaments. Uh, let's try to keep it focused on tournaments right now, guys.
I will say for the tournaments though, like if we wanna focus more on like League and Dota, we have to at least have the dedicated manpower on our end to support that. You know, the administration staff as well as just casting.
A StarCraft event, uh, as most of us know, you only need about three to five people to run a successful StarCraft event. When you're running a League of Legends or a Dota event, you really need a, a staff of about at least a half a dozen. You know, between your casters and your admins. So it's a lot bigger fish to fry than it is when you're running a StarCraft event. So you're absolutely right. We, we are gonna have to do some expanding and some more organization, and that's gonna come from our community. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we've been approached by Zeke and asked because of how successful our StarCraft events are. And how much we bring them, they have, uh, Lane has asked me to talk to you guys about running more League of Legends and Dota 2 events in the future. I'm happy to hear that, uh, most of you guys think that this is a good idea, but I, I would agree with all of you that there's some things that we're gonna have to do in order to make it happen.
Also, Morse, I just wanted to run it by you because I was planning to do that after every League of Legends tournament. Is it okay if I do like an AAR, sort of a write-up thing? Just like an analysis of what happened?
Uh, yeah.
Recap?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what is an AAR?
After-action report.
It's a military term.
Yeah, I used to get it when I played PR, but...
I was, uh, I have, I have army officer training. That's the only reason I know it.
I have seen a soldier before.
Oh, Graven. Alright, any other thoughts or comments, um, in regards to our tournament department and its continued success? Alright, moving on? Waffles, Graven, Shadow, the floor is yours.
Uh, this, wait, we're, we're talking about what we want for League of Legends tournaments, right?
Um, the conversation right now is going towards the entire League of Legends community in general. Anything you guys wanna talk about? Some stuff that I pulled up was, uh, that I feel that we need to be a bit more organized and we need to set up a system to find, uh, to help teams find players and for players to find teams, et cetera. Um, we've done a very good job on the StarCraft side of streamlining things and setting up, making it easier for new recruits to find where they need to go and what they need to do. It's not like that in League of Legends. Uh, in fact, if you go to the team page for League of Legends in the forums, uh, majority of those are dead. Uh, and I don't mean that the teams are dead, um, although some of them are, but just like there's no conversation and things like that. Uh, so. Yep, so what can we, you know, so Graven, uh, Waffles, uh, all you League of Legends guys, what can we do to help you grow your community and make your community, you know, your slice of Infinity Gaming? More welcoming and more productive and, and popular?
Alright, so in general, creating a coherent League of Legends team is very, very difficult because it's a commitment from five people that has to be... Pretty much cooperation with each other. And that's something, no matter how hard I try to micromanage, I can do. And I don't think, no sorry too, if he was here with, I think he would agree with me. It's just really, really hard to get five people to always be on for practice and do all this stuff and not fall apart. So that's something I can't really control, but it's something that I'm gonna look into later on down the line. Right now, I think the biggest pull for our community is our League of Legends tournaments, which are bimonthly. And for those, which I will write about more in my after-action report, I, there are slight issues that need to be dealt with. Uh, mostly the fact that I feel really bad when I can't get to like the twenty people messaging me in chat in time. And there's gonna be some formatting changes for future tournaments and stuff that I will also write about. But in general, like if one wants to help, all I need really are extra admins to help me out, uh, during the early hours of the tournament. Later on, it gets quiet, but at the start, it's just.
It's a clusterfuck.
Yeah, it's a massive clusterfuck, worse than I think like StarCraft or something, because I'm getting messaged by five people from every team because they don't know how to funnel and cap them.
Yeah, five times more than StarCraft.
Yeah, it's driving me insane and I gotta give like props to Shadow and everyone else who decided to like help me that day.
Yeah, we really came together as a team. That was cool.
Because I was like dying in the water, but yeah, thanks for all that that. I'll, I'll post, um, a more formal request later on today when I do do that write-up.
Atlas had a, a really good, uh, Atlas had a really good solution. Split the bracket into two halves and, and have, you know, have a one admin for seed one, one admin for seed two, one admin for seed three, one admin for seed four. And then have one person like you, Waffles, you know, you'd be the admin, but you'd have a mod. Uh, I also liked your system that you had last night of trying to get the team captains into one room and just telling everybody, if you're not a team captain, don't fucking talk to me. Um, at least that's what I was doing in a friendly customer service kind of tone, but, um, was basically, I don't wanna hear from you unless you're a team captain. I need your team name, et cetera. It's gonna be a learning process. It took us, it took us over a year to solidify our StarCraft tournament scene. And, uh, we're just now, I would say, within the last twenty, thirty weeks, um, where we wanna be on the StarCraft side. So it's gonna take a while for League of Legends to develop.
My only counterpoint to Ad, like Atlas's solution is, I think I'm like the typical League of Legends type player. Um, when I see like admins for the thing, I'm not gonna be like, oh, this admin's supposed to run bracket one. I'm gonna wa- like message Waffles and if he tells me to go somewhere else, I'm like, bro. Bro, help me out. Because that's, that's.
No, the solution is, I would write that up in a procedure. I'd probably have to. The main issue with why the system I had in place didn't really work.
It's because nobody fucking read the rules.
Nobody fucking read the rules. So what I'm gonna do next time is I'm gonna put it in thirty-two point, uh, all the italics at the top of the thing.
Dude, that's what you gotta do, because like, I know, I, as I said, typical League of Legends player, me, I'm fucking stupid. I, I'm gonna read the first words that are up there, like, League of Legends sign up. Alright, we're in, bros.
That's broskis.
Like, put, like, put it up in bold letters up at the top, otherwise no one's gonna look at it. And if you can make it a different color, that's probably better.
I'll do it in rainbow. Anyway, I don't have, like I said, I'm gonna, I, I've got like two paragraphs typed out already for the AAR thing, so, uh, anything... That I have planned and anything that I've discussed will be posted there.
I will be doing some changes to the forum on the League of Legends side. Uh, Waffles, I would like for you to get me a list of any teams that we actually have at this time. Um, I'm going to create a, I'm gonna create a thread that basically says, um, looking for a team. You know, for individual people to post that they're looking for a team. I'm also going to post or also make a general thing for people who are looking for players. That they would be able to post that they're looking, kinda like the recruitment threads that a lot of us are familiar with on Team Liquid. And, go ahead.
I think personally, the, the major issue is we shouldn't be giving teams whole forums, especially for League of Legends, because... They disbanded literally like after a month, I think was our longest-running team.
Well, I think it's a good thing because it shows structure and organization, even if they are only up there for a month or two. But you're absolutely right. We're not gonna be giving them out like candy. You, you need to show that you're an established team, you have regular practices times, you're competing... Uh, in events and tournaments, going to LANs, you know, whatever the case may be. You've gotta show us that you're a dedicated competitive team in order to earn yourself your own forum in the teams. That was kinda my thoughts on it.
Uh, I wanted to say something about forums. Like, if you're gonna make forums for like looking for teams, you know, like, I'm like SD2, like you have like shit where it's like Protoss, Zerg, Terran. Can you get one of those for like, like, this is the looking for group session for the League of Legends thing? If this is, you're a top laner, you're AD carry, you're mid laner, you're support, you're jungler.
Uh, I don't think that would be helpful.
No.
That's a lot of sub-forms.
No, that's, that's gonna look.
No, that would, the thing is, we don't, that, that would be okay if we actually had a very large community, but we don't. And it'd pretty much just create like seven really small forums. So I think it's better that we just keep our current structure on that. Maybe, maybe in the future, okay, I'll make, let me get your post.
Okay, I was just trying to dumb it down because I know I have a problem with forums due to the fact they are confusing.
So you wanna add more?
No, but if this is like a secret group, hey, you're looking for a top laner? Boom, hit the top lane.
But you could just, in your, uh, if you, if you were looking for, you could just like put that in.
Put that in your post.
I gotta list down a list.
Alright. I, I see what you're saying, Graven. Um, but I, I, I think with the numbers that we have in our League of Legends side, it's not... It's not, it, it's just gonna be more of a headache than anything.
What Morse said. And we also have a guide section already. It's just not frequently posted to. Alright, the general structure of the League of Legends forum is perfectly fine right now. It's just the thing with teams like leaving really quick and then... We have dead forums hanging around. Needs to be addressed. But besides that, that's all. Oh, Morse, um, I also need forum permission still.
Alright. Get with me. Send me a private message on the forums.
Okay.
For those of you that don't know, I ch- I've, um, I keep track of my workflow for Infinity through private messaging. Uh, that's when I jump on and I'm doing a business day and I'm working in the office, uh, what I do is I pull up my messages and I make that my task list. In addition to the things that I know I need to do, like update the homepage and that kinda stuff. Uh, if there's ever anything that you need me to do and it's not an oh-my-god immediate, like I need you to do this now, just send it to me in a private message. I'll get to it within a week at to- at the most. Uh, any other thoughts or comments in regards to the League of Legends stuff? I think you guys are growing pretty well and I really appreciate what you guys bring to our community. I know it seems that we're a very StarCraft-oriented, um, community. But, uh, for better or worse, quite a few of our StarCraft players are getting burned out. Uh, I know myself, I like to play a game of League every once in a while now that I understand the game. And I've accepted the fact that it's broken. Uh, it makes it a lot more enjoyable. So, um, you know, if you're interested in League of Legends, you know, help out, chime in. Put a team together. I know Goose is looking for some folks. Uh, those of you that don't know, Goose, oh, it's full?
Yeah, like, we, it's basically full. Like, I think we're looking for some subs.
Cool.
I think he wants to like pick up a second team just so we can scrim against someone and shit.
So, uh...
But like, it's mainly full.
See, I get ahold of Waffles. As you can see, right now, the, the League of Legends, uh, community is, uh, has a lot of leadership. Not everybody has the right permissions and things like that that they do, they need to do their job. We'll be modifying and adding to those, uh, over the course of the next, uh, week or so. But to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, Waffles, the leadership staff is pretty much Waffles, Goose, Shadow and the Richmond. Uh, Nasta Fruity's pretty much been ASK for about a month now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um...
Hey, Shadow, I missed up the tournament yesterday. Make sure to horral Infinity enough.
Uh, we did at the end. I completely forgot because I was busy with other stuff at the time.
Yeah, the, the first like three hours of the tournament was kind of a clusterfuck.
Oh, my bad. I really wish I was on. I just slept through. I forgot it was today.
It's fine. We had, I think, uh, like thirty concurrent viewers or something high like that.
At the start of the tournament, we had eighty-something and then a lot of people turned it off.
Yeah, cuz... Cuz technical issues.
Ain't no one as interesting as me.
Then we started about an hour late too. That can't happen, guys. That will cost us our membership with Zeke.
It wasn't intended. It wasn't intended. Like, we did start the stream on time and everything like that. It's just the teams took forever to get into their games.
Brackets are supposed to be posted at the start of the tournament. Brackets were not up on time.
Zeke was like, I had the...
Yeah, the, the brackets, I, I hit the button like a minute after deadline time.
Okay. Well, not trying to come down on you, just sharing that it's a, it's a concern that they may have if it becomes a habit.
Oh, we know and we're trying to, you know, iron everything out.
Good, good, good. Alright, anything else? League of Legends? Going once? Going twice?
Oh, man, I don't think under, I don't think that under pressure.
How would you guys feel about like League of Legends people integrating like StarCraft and League of Legends and having some fun stuff between games? Like maybe have a four-v-four on StarCraft with two players that played League and two players that play StarCraft and then play a game of League of Legends? With three people who play League, two people who play StarCraft per each team?
Not everyone who plays League of Legends owns StarCraft. Remember, i- it's free to get League of Legends. It's not free to get StarCraft.
Plus, I ran into a problem of, a lot of StarCraft people hate League of Legends people. Just throwing that out.
And vice versa.
It's not that we hate, it's not that we hate League of Legends people. We just can't stand the fact that a broken bullshit, child-based game is taking over the esports scene. There, I said it.
You stole MKP from, you stole MKP from me.
Yeah, dude.
You stole MKP from me.
You think I'm ever gonna fucking watch some LCS just to watch some MKP? Hell no.
Dude, and my only reaction to that is, why you gotta be so stuck up?
Spec does bring up a very important point. Spec does pull up, bring up a very...
They have an AD carry now that doesn't have boobs.
Yeah, but she's also like a Playboy bunny, but that's just a different situation.
But guys, you guys are assholes and then when you hop into StarCraft, no one's an asshole. Everyone's like, oh, BM. It's like, you say one square word and then you're like, BM.
Okay.
But, but.
We're getting off topic.
But in League of Legends, like you just run your freaking mouth and no one cares.
I, I still, we... We still.
It's not fun when you're raging at one guy that goes zero and ten.
In all fairness, I, like, I've been into StarCraft thing as well as the League of Legends thing. You only, you get yelled at more in StarCraft than you do in League of Legends.
That's bullshit.
That's not true.
That's not true, Graven. Well, maybe you're an asshole. Hey, did you ever think of that? Maybe you're the asshole?
Yeah, but I always make myself feel bad.
Do I take this as a?
Play people just yell at me.
Okay, so what's the next topic we need to talk about?
Um, well, hold on, you got thirty seconds. No, I'm kidding. We can move on, uh, this conversation. Did, uh, disintegrate pretty quickly, but it was entertaining. No, no, it's fine, guys. Uh, we're still, we're still, and we're actually ahead of schedule. That's one of the reasons I didn't jump in and put a stop to it. Alright, so, um, next is Dota 2, guys. Uh, as we touched on earlier, we used to have a, a really top-notch Dota 2 team. They were invited to, uh, is it, was it, no, it was, they made it in...
Alienware Arena.
Alienware Arena. They got an invite to a, a European tournament, one of the only four North American. Alienware Arena, they got an invite to a, a European tournament, one of the only four North American teams that was invited. Um, beating out teams like Dignitas, uh, Evil Geniuses. Uh, there was another big name, I can't remember, they also competed-
They played NoTideHunter. Now, my Backwind Alliance was NoTideHunter, they did play them. Uh, I'm trying to find that game now on YouTube, actually. I, I think it was Infinity Black.
Yep.
Yes.
So, we've got, we've got a, a really good, um, and a few of those members from that team are still hanging around, they have a few friends that play Dota. Uh, but, uh, just like the League of Legends side, the Dota 2 side is having a hard time setting up and organizing a regular, um, regular teams and practices and such. I personally would really like for us to get our Dota 2 community at the very least to the level that it is for, uh, League of Legends, and hopefully to the level that it is for StarCraft in the long run. But, they need help, uh, they need help recruiting, they need more players, they need, uh, people that are gonna be able to help them admin and do stuff. Uh, Burt and Big N right now are the two people that communicate to me the most about what's going on in the Dota 2 community. I consider them our moderators, or admins if you will, for our Dota 2 community. If you see them, be sure to give them some props, say hello, uh, let them know that you support them and, and ask them what you can do to help. I really wish we could have expanded more on this, but I mean, unless there's a member of the Dota 2 community here, like I s, I know me and Atlas and, and Shadow play, but you know, I'm not a member of that, you know, that part of our community, if you will. Um, I mean, does, does anybody, I'm, I'm very sorry that, uh, you know, they couldn't show up today. But does anybody have any questions or thoughts about Dota 2 that I might be able to address? So-
Just for clarification, the, the team we did have was actually a professional semi-pro team.
So-
Getting it there.
Yeah.
They were way up there.
And, uh, and, and Burt and Big N were members of those, of that team. Um, Illafan was too, Infuse. And you'll see them, uh, on from time to time, usually in the evenings and on the weekends. Give them some love, ask them, uh, ask them to teach you how to play, if you're interested, things like that.
What happened to them?
They're still here, it's just IRL caught up to them, so they couldn't get time to practice.
Oh.
These are facts. A shout out to, uh, Nathan White and Michael Henry Harris Jr.
Why?
They liked our Facebook.
Yay!
Within the last hour.
Wow.
Um, pop, pop, pop. So yeah, I, I guess really nothing much else to talk about this, guys, I, I'm, as a leader of your community, I want every part of our uh, community to be successful, and our Dota 2 department, I wouldn't say is struggling right now, because they're happy where they're at, but they would like to expand, they would like to get bigger, they would like to be back in the big stage. And, uh, I, I would like for us to chip in and help them if we can. So, anything that you can do to help them out, please do so. I'm gonna go ahead and switch gears, I, this was going to be, uh, Vampy's presentation, but I believe he had some real-life obligations that he could not get out of. He posted a report not too long ago on the homepage, I'm gonna pull that up right now. Or not the homepage, in the forums. Um, he put it in announcements, didn't he?
Uh, I believe he did.
Here we go, alright, so Vampy put out a nice quarterly report, uh, in anticipation of him not being able to get here. Uh, he goes over a lot of, uh, stuff in regards to our accomplishments as a StarCraft community in the last, uh, three months. Also, what he plans, uh, to do in the future. I'd like, uh, if you haven't done so, if you're a member of the StarCraft community, read this post from your chief administrator. For those of you that don't know, the structure has changed a little bit on the StarCraft side of things in the last, uh, ninety days. We now have, uh, uh, a new, um, leadership tree, I guess, you know, reporting structure. A senior management at this time for StarCraft includes Vampy, Atlas, Man and Dracarath. Vampy oversees the entire StarCraft 2 department, and the North American A-team. Man oversees the B-team in North America. Atlas oversees our Academy team in North America. And Dracarath oversees the entire EU division. Wow, that was weird, did you guys see that on stream? Whoa, what is going on? I'm not touching anything, it's freaking out.
Let's go.
Dude, that was fucking weird.
Why is that twitchy? This is, eh, this is weird.
Yeah, dude, that was fucking nuts, alright, so anyway, um, they have of course a few lieutenants, uh, each captain can have up to three lieutenants for his department. If you as an individual member are having an issue, you need to talk to your lieutenant, talk to your captain. If they can't help you, then you talk to Vampy, if Vampy can't help you, then talk to me. Uh, I don't have the time to handle every little day-to-day thing, unfortunately. You guys have me focusing on bigger fish, and in order for me to focus on this bigger fish, you gotta utilize the chain of command. Make sure that you're reporting things through that chain of command. We've got a, we've done a lot of really big things for, uh, the team leagues, uh, Clan Wars, in-house events and, and, and obviously more. And our, our growth and structure is right where we want it to be. I'd like to give my hats, you know, hats off, or give a round of applause to all the members of the leadership staff and the players and the community members who have made our StarCraft 2 division so popular and powerful. And I'd like to open the floor for, uh, Atlas and Man and Hacken Slash to, uh, give us a quick little update on what's going on with their teams and, uh, what they expect to see out of the future and what they've been doing. Uh, let's go ahead and start with, uh, Atlas, our, uh, Academy captain, who oversees all the Platinum and Diamond players in North America.
Alright, um, okay, brief overview, like Vampy said in his, um, in his report. The Academy, we've only been live for about t- two months, a month and a half? No. Gone off three months now, since we started. Uh, the Academy was originally created for SC2 CTL. Um, like Vampy said, it started a, as that sketchy team that no one really wanted to be a part of. Because we took all the Diamonds that were on the A-team, uh, including myself, stripped them of their A-team status, took all the Platinums out of the B-team, and we created the Academy, with the sole purpose of performing in the SC2 CTL. Um, da-da, that's basic general of my, of the, the big part of my discussion right now. Um, brief overview, uh, the point scorings are right there, um, we started out after we registered in the final, like in Group Z, I'll call it, it was like the last group. Um, it was a very hard group to start out, and we came out three and oh, we didn't drop a single game. Uh, then we went on to Winners Group 1, which was the group of literal death, where we went one and two. And we got destroyed by EXE Ghost and TRG. Luckily though, we did win Group Stage 1, so we did secure ourselves a spot in the playoffs, where it came down to pure pure hope and living on a prayer. Um, basically, we managed to fight our way up through the bracket stages, uh, eliminating EXE Ghost, uh, in a rematch. TRG got eliminated by, uh, crap, who did we play in the finals, was it? They, uh, by DubMD. So, we did go to the finals of the SC2 CTL and we did bring it home. Uh, five-four. So, that was a really good thing, um, but since the summer ended, we have seen activity go down, because a lot of players started going back to school. And like I was stressing earlier, um, it's getting harder to find Diamonds. I know, one thing me and Vampy are working on is personally approaching players. Uh, like, I have a few players that have signed up for the Academy Open tonight. Uh, one player in particular, he has played in numerous Infinity Gaming events, he's currently teamless. I'm hoping to pick him up as a free agent, um. I also had another person in mind, but he is a officer in the Impulse Esports community, so I don't think I'm gonna get him. Um, but yeah, that's basically it, we're focusing now on more player recruitment and we're still trying to find Clan Wars, they're very hard to find, like, almost every team we played from out of SC2 CTL. I either don't wanna play them because I know that they're bad-mannered as hell, such as TRG, or they've gone dark. But we're also focusing on reworking the practice groups, um, the actual goal of the practice groups was for the leadership team at the time to sit down, manage to get around to play everybody, to see who who was strong and who was not strong. It was our way of evaluating our players, along with going through your match history, we, we, we had to see who knew, like, we had to separate the weak from the strong. Like when it came down to playtime, like going for the gold. Um, but that all accomplishes goals, um, we're currently now reworking our practice format, like I said. Um, there's going to be an announcement tonight after the Academy Open, as of what our new structure will be, me and Daniel have an idea in mind. Gone dark means AFK.
Like disbanded?
Okay, um, let me give you an example. Uh, we played EXE Ghost twice in SC2 CTL. About two weeks after the Team League, I contacted their team captain, Bala. I was like, hey man, uh, do you wanna set Clan War? And he said he had a lot of trouble because a lot of his players had gone AFK after the Team League.
They came here!
I, I'm sorry, when people-
Oh, that was Atlas that timed out.
Oh wow, when they say, they go AFK, they just talk about like, I haven't seen him in a while, cuz when I say AFK, I mean like, I went AFK to the fridge. Like, is that, is it, people just using it for like a certain point in time, cuz I, I swear to God, I've only heard it in StarCraft.
Not-
Always confuses me.
I, AFK-
It just means-
They're gone, dude.
There we go, there we go, there we go.
They're just away from the keyboard.
Did, 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 did you guys-
There's no, there's no set time, uh, BR, BRB is, you know, I'm just gonna be away for a second.
Did, did, did you guys hear my last word about merging?
No.
Uh, no.
Uh, basically, basically EXE Ghost and Atlas Gaming disbanded and merged with Vast Gamers, I'm hoping to get Clan War going there uh, soon, but it looks like they're carrying more BSGs than PD&amp;Ms.
Oh, Atlas.
One second. Also, I'm in the works with Dracarath to arrange a NA versus EU Clan War. We're hoping to do it along the same format as the uh, Clan War versus Victory Finals, with two Gold, two Plat, two Diamond, two Masters in Pro League format. Uh, other than that, we're still working on, like I said, getting more players, because at this time the Academy is our largest roster and we need it to grow. We need more practice partners, because more practice means more chances of getting someone into Masters onto the A-team. Are there any questions for me?
Um, Vast Gamer has been sucking up Atlas Gaming as well, so-
Yeah, they, they, they merged.
Yeah. So we're playing, I think, their BSG today.
Did I hear a clown horn for a second there? I'm sorry, I'm really tired, so I may have just heard something else, but-
I heard it too.
I'm, sorry, I'm fucking with my harmonica, I'll put it down, I didn't know you could hear it.
Alright, any, any more questions for me at the time? Sixty, do you have any questions? Cuz, uh, I don't know, sixty's full of questions.
Alright.
Uh, Joe, I have any, any questions?
Uh, no man.
Eon, any questions?
Wait, what is the Academy team again? Just to make sure.
Oh my God, Graven.
Black Diamond, alright.
Why are you playing a game of LOL in the middle of this meeting?
I'm not! StarCraft for a while, we're sorry, I'm looking at your stream right now. You have the StarCraft 2 thing up, really Team Leagues, Clan Wars, and in-house and shit.
Oh fuck, he can read, we're in trouble, guys. Alright, I'm gonna pass this on, we're gonna pass the stick on to Hacken. Uh, Hacken is, uh, representing the EU division. Uh, please be gentle, uh, I've heard that he's not, uh, uh, an accomplished public speaker or anything like that, but he's gonna do his best to share with us what's going on on the EU side of teams, they are just exploding right now.
Hey, hey guys, um, yeah, I'm gonna talk a bit about the EU team today, so firstly, recruitment's been going really well for us, like, me and Draco together, we made like posts on Reddit, Team Liquid, those places, and we've, like, our membership has shot up, like, recently, in the last couple of days, we maxed out the clan in-game, so is that a hundred members, right? Pretty sure it is, yeah. Um, yeah, that's a pretty good point, practice going pretty well in EU, um, like, we have the A-team, which is like, obviously Platinum and above, and then the B-team, and practice is going well for everybody, like improvement and stuff. Um, but the main problem we're having is recruitment Masters, because rooting Masters or even Top Diamonds is extremely hard. Um, for anybody who's like recruited for the teams in INF, fishing StarCraft will probably know that like, yeah, that might, whenever you're trying to recruit a Master, it's like, okay, how many, how many, uh, GMs have you got, or, you know, just crap like that, and it's really hard to recruit, but we're working on that. Um, we've had one Clan War so far with our new team, but, um, kind of struggling, obviously cuz with the lack of Masters, hard to have like Masters on the Clan Wars. But, but we're looking into that, and we'll probably have another Clan War in a week or two, um, I don't know, but we probably will do, and uh, we have a couple of members on the EU side interested in the tournaments, uh, like running tournaments as well, you can stuff, and obviously all needs to be sorted out with most of the other people, but hopefully, like, that sort of stuff can happen, but yeah, we're just like going along, practicing, and trying to build up like nice roster and start Clan Wars and stuff again. Hopefully, because a lot of you who don't know, like, the EU team, we were in INF before, and then some of us went to Exo Gaming, a lot of us went to Exo Gaming, and then everybody's reformed back into INF with, um, EXE and all the Exo members, so everything's starting to settle down, and we're starting to get some Clan War teams ready, and yeah, pretty much it, any questions?
Uh, I for one have been in touch with Dracarath, uh, on a, a weekly basis at worst, and have been nothing but impressed with the organization and development and the growth that's going on over on the EU side, so hats off to you, Hacken Slash, and all of your peers, you guys are doing a really good job representing us over in the EU. Really appreciate it. Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Alright, well, I'm gonna pass it over to our B-team captain, um, I'm sure Cube will chime in from time to time as he's a lieutenant for the B-team. Uh, but, uh, Man, uh, you have the floor, buddy.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I just, uh, posted an hour ago, um, a report on the announcement thread. And what I'm gonna do is just, uh, pass it a bit fast, so I don't bore you guys. So, uh, so you to know what's been on on the B-team. Uh, well, like Atlas say, we actually split, uh, our B-team, actually, we changed, uh, the whole structure. And that's players passed to the Academy right now, while it was like, uh, on August. And so, the B-team became, uh, Bron Silver Gold. Um, well, I, I assumed there as a captain, and with the help of Morse and Wes Sabre, there were the lieutenants at the moment. Uh, Morse was like a temporary lieutenant, because, oh, he got a lot of stuff to do in the clan, but he was helping me to, and the, and the team of course, to establish, and, well, that was a pretty good workout, and finally, we we let Morse, uh, we released him from, uh, his-
My indentured servitude?
And, and then, uh, what happened too, that Wise Saver was, uh, well, he was, uh, I mean, li- little, little time to play StarCraft and to be with the team, so he decided to to left the lieutenant stand, and-
If I could chime in for a moment?
Katalis, they assume as lieutenants, and I think everybody knows, both of them, Cube and Katalis, they're uh, longer term members, and they have participated in almost everything in the clan, so uh, I think that both of them were having enough merits to, to be lieutenants, so, so they became it. Uh, okay, a couple of things of the B-Team that we, that is running right now. Uh, some, certain things I'm gonna repeat because they were already said, but I'm just gonna pass this fast. Uh, the, one thing, if my English is not too good, just please stop me and I will say it again because uh, sometimes I just forget, I try too late on, on the, on the fly. Uh, well, the, the, the team hosts an, uh, an open tournament every first Saturday of every month. And we have already two, September and October 1, with a new format. I, I mean, uh, till Gold. And it was pretty good, the tournament worked well, and actually, the, the B-Team members win the both of them, that was pretty cool. We are having right now, um, in other order, uh, uh, Paus League, that is, uh, Morse is running, the B-Team, it's called the Fall Arena. This is the, the second league in the B-Team, the, the first one was pretty successful, I think, uh, everybody really enjoyed. And we begin the second season, or the Fall Re- of the, uh, the Fall Season. And it's working pretty well. And we are, we are, uh, we want to do that more often because I think that all the members, uh, really enjoy and really, they're respecting kind of tournaments, and enforce a lot the, the, how you say, the, the bonds between the, the members. We are gonna, we participated from the StarCraft 2 Community Team League. We get to the playoffs, the finals, um, before, we lose with the, the team that finally became the champion. Uh, that was a pretty good, I, I really liked the tournament. I think the, I think that we have like, it's kind of weird or something like this, but we have a really good team, uh-
We have like the, one of the best BSG teams ever.
No, it's true, I, I gotta assume a bit of a, a fault for, in the last match, I, I was having a couple of troubles, like in my private life, and, and I didn't give the team the support I needed, I had to leave in the middle of the, of the of the match, that was pretty bad for me. And, but, well, you know, the kind of things sometimes happen, it's just, uh, it was something that, of course, was not planned. But we are ready for, ready for the second season, uh, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna do it much more better. And in other, uh, order, we got Clan War tonight. Uh, actually, Cube has been taking care of the Clan Wars for the team, that's pretty cool. Uh, last week, we used to have one, but something happened with the other team, I don't know what happened. And I think, uh, tonight, gonna, it, it's actually gonna be the, our first, uh, Clan War with the new format, the Bronze Silver Gold. That was, this is gonna be pretty cool. Um, what else is happening? Okay, we got two programs. Implemented in last month, there was the replay analysis and the practice groups. The replay analysis, uh, well, the idea was to attend specific cases for the members to post replays and ask for feedback. Actually, something happened there, it was like, was created almost the same time that Daniel was, uh, updating his structure in, in the strategy, uh, thread, so, uh, this is gonna get, uh, fusion, fusion. I'm gonna game to just, uh, trespass all the threads to that, because, uh, already there, and there's, there's no way that, there's no need to be in two places, I think that Daniel is doing a great job, so I'm, I'm gonna pass to him the responsibility. Uh, but it's working pretty well, we already have like, uh, members are having the habit to, to ask for help, and that was one of the main reasons that we, we started the program. And the practice group actually became like two weeks ago, it happened, hasn't, uh, no, sorry, that was terrible English. Uh, it's had not been that successful as I expected, but, uh, I think the main problem is that we actually have like, uh, a kind of a problem with the inactivity of some members, but I'm, I'm gonna back that like in, in a minute. Uh, okay, the, the last two months, we have over, uh, fifteen recruits. And this is something I was, well, I want to, uh, say it, that we got a problem with constan- with constants-
Consistency.
Members to be constant, consistency, thanks. Um, but actually, we, we would say like, ten of the new recruits are constant, they're, they came like, uh, come and go, but they're, they're, they're being constant. And we actually have fifteen active members, and soon to the ten active recruits, we are having like, uh, twenty-five active members, that's pretty cool. Uh, what I was saying, that inactivity of members, and that, soon, I gotta admit that maybe it's, it's a bit of, uh, uh, fault from us, the captain and lieutenant, that we actually don't know exactly how to communicate, because nobody, everybody checked the forum, that's kind of a weird thing, but I'm trying that all the members check more often the forum. But, well, uh, it's not happening right now, so got a bit of a problem with, um, uh, communication.
I actually, I have, I have something I wanna chime in on, man, real quick, just cause you brought this up, and I discovered this the other day, and I'm using this to keep track of things on the forums while I'm at work. There is a, oh, where is it, where is it, where is it? If you go into an actual forum, you can get the RSS feed right down here of that forum. So what somebody could do if they don't want to troll the forums every day, what I would recommend doing is going to one or two forums of your choice, we'll use the B-Team for example.
Yeah.
And then I click this, and I can pull up the news theme. And this, you would just load into an RSS feeder, and then you would be able to get an email whenever there's a new topic and things like that. I, I just wanted to throw that in, it's something I discovered earlier this week, and I'm still tweaking with it, so anybody that wants to play around with that, uh, I encourage you to do so. Thank you, I, sorry for stealing the floor.
No, no, this is true, this is great, I think that, um, maybe we should do like, uh, a little manual of how it works, because I, I tried to incentivize the members that at least check the forum like once, twice a week. Uh, but I don't know, sometimes that doesn't work.
We should do something silly, man, where we're like, uh, uh, first B-Teamer to reply to this post doesn't have to practice on Saturday or some shit like that, like-
Yeah, true.
Or automatically, automatically opener for our next Clan War or some shit, you know?
Yeah, maybe we-
Am I still technically part of the B-Team?
Technically.
Technically, but not physically, because you've not been attending practice-
You're, you're what we would refer to as, and this is one of the things that a lot of people have always, kind of, some, especially the newer folks, they're struggled with, is there's community members and then there's team members, just because, for example, um, I, I play League of Legends, but I'm not on a team, but, so I'm kind of a member of the League of Legends community. Where, so like in StarCraft, Graven, you, you play StarCraft, but you don't really play it competitively, so you'd be like a B-Team community member. If, you know, you like to, because you're an established member of the community, we'd probably let you play in like, the, the summer, or, or, you know, the Fall Arena or something like that. But the odds of us putting you in on a Clan War, we would want to put our more consistent players in and things like that, people that are on our teams, as opposed to somebody like you who's a community member. So in a way, you can participate in a lot of B-Team events and be a part of the B-Team. But, um, when it comes down to like the competitive edge, Man and, and Cube will have the last say on, you know, who, who gets to play and things like that.
Okay, I was just talking about like, if you did that B-Team, like, first in the post on this thing, so I can like, pull my way into be the first person in a B-Team Clan War, being like, sup! And then fucking progress, people.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we would have a discussion about that for sure. God, you're a troll today. Hey, Vampy's here!
Okay, one second. Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Cube.
Okay, on the B-Team, we're not really, like, sure we go competitive, but we, Man tries to fit in a lot of the players. Like, maybe for the Clan War tonight, we won't use a lot of our competitive players, maybe we'll use more of the community players tonight.
Just a-
But if it comes down to the last draw, we're just trying to play a lot of people. Like, maybe if Graven shows up tonight, we might be able to play him.
Think of it like, uh, T-ball.
You don't want that, because that progress thing was a joke.
He'll do it, I've seen it.
Okay, and, and today, we do have a Clan War for sure, I just double-checked.
Cool.
What, what time is it?
Um, wait-
It's at 6pm.
Yeah, it's at, it's at 6pm Pacific, so 8pm, it's starting about the same time as the Academy, um, we're gonna be streaming that on the, uh, on the Alternative channel, and, uh, the, um, the Academy Open will be on the mainstream.
And-
Who's casting it?
I'm casting the, I thought I was casting the B-Team tonight.
Um, Morse, you can ca- can I use you as a patch? I told Shadow he could, you could gas if he came, and then you could go gas with him if he came.
Oh dude, I didn't know you had something lined up, I just, I planned it, cause I hadn't heard anything. If you got, if you got Shadow to do it, then do it.
Yeah, but if he's not there, um, I need a streamer, which would be you.
Okay, well, um, I, I feel like we stole the floor from Man, and that's my fault, uh-
No, no, that's cool, man, that's cool, that's cool. I think that's great that everybody can participate. Um, I, that's, I think, I don't have much to say, I, I just, uh, I don't know, I think that with all the things, uh, I think the B-Team is like, working well. I think we can, we can do it much more better, for sure. And, I don't know, expect better results for next, uh, month. That's all.
Awesome. Um, does anybody have any questions or concerns, uh, to share with the B-Team leadership?
Nah, but just to bring it back to that, eh, Morse, if you end up casting it, can I co-cast with you?
Yeah, it's been a while since we've casted together.
I don't think we've ever casted together.
I think we have.
It may have been once.
It was, it was just once, cause it was pretty bad.
Eh!
Well, we, we had, you and I had a great time.
Dude, I don't know what you're talking about, whenever I cast, it's always like the highest amount of viewers, because I'm fucking hilarious somehow.
Well, Graven, maybe you should, uh, talk to Shadow and Izanagi about, uh-
I can't. Cause, uh, whenever I, like, right now, I, my schedule's like, I do not-
That's like saying I'm the best skier. That's like coming up to me and I'm like the, the US ski coach, we're getting ready to go to the Winter Olympics, and you're like, dude, I am the best fucking downhill jumper ever, but I don't have any legs.
No, it's more like, we're about to go to the thing, and then I'm like, hey bro, I gotta stop, because shit popped up. Like, I was, I was doing it, and I was doing good, but then I had to stop.
The Graven, everybody. Alright, um, so, any, any other concerns? Um, alright, well, since Vampy showed up, and we still have about ten minutes left in our allotted time for this Town Hall, um, Vampy, uh, I very glazed over what you had talked about, and had, then just pass it on to Atlas and Man and, and Hacken. Do you, do you have anything you wanna make sure is covered here in the Town Hall, that, uh, you think maybe we may have skimmed over?
Uh, let me get my report, as I didn't write them down.
That's cool. While you're doing that, I'm gonna do a shameless plug, uh, you guys know, you better know, we're doing, we're, we're getting ready to launch a t-shirt store. Ownage has finalized our proposal, they're totally down, we have a starting price. Uh, Infinity Gaming is going to foot half of the bill for our startup, we're asking for you guys to contribute for the rest of that. Uh, this is going to, uh, drop our budget a bunch, but we're gonna be able to use the t-shirts that Infinity Gaming is paying for, uh, use those codes as prizes for handouts on streams, during events, for prizes for tournaments and things like that. So there'll be, uh, ten t-shirts that, uh, that the community will have. And then the other ten t-shirts are going to go out to you guys, community members who have made donations, like Cole, for example, he's already made a donation of, uh, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and indicated that it was for the t-shirt, so that's going, uh, he'll be getting a code. Uh, somebody else got a code as well, I don't know the person's name on the forums, and I'm not gonna say their real life name. Um, the, uh, fuck, fuck, fuck. Oh yeah, just twenty-two fifty, as soon as we get the remaining, last I checked, we still have eight shirts available. Then we'll be able to launch our store. Uh, this is the only time you're gonna be able to get these t-shirts at price, they're only twenty-two fifty, that's what it's costing Infinity Gaming to get them made. You'll still have to pay for the shipping and handling, unfortunately, we couldn't get that for free, uh, we're trying, that's one of the things we're looking for in the long run. We are also, um, uh, yeah, so we need about, about two hundred dollars more, eight more t-shirts, and we're gonna be good to go on that. Once we get this partnership set up, the t-shirts are actually going to end up being twenty-four fifty, but just for a little bit. Uh, as we get closer to the holiday seasons, we have plans to launch out a full line, and the goal is by 2014, we'll have three tiers of t-shirts available. Uh, a regular, you know, novelty t-shirt, that just has like our logo on it, things like that, um, for a very low cost, uh, around nineteen bucks, Infinity Gaming will only be making a little bit off of it. Then we'll have what we're gonna call our supporter t-shirt, and that will be a bit more expensive, but they'll be a bit fancier. Uh, and those t-shirts will be at that price range because not so much that they're worth it, but the way our partnership with Ownage is, we, they sell the t-shirt at cost plus whatever we tell them to tack on, and then whatever they tack on is what we actually make in revenue. So, that tier is gonna be a little more expensive for what you're getting, because you're gonna have the peace of mind in knowing that you're directly supporting Infinity and getting a nice shirt out of it. The third and final tier, and why we wanna make sure we're ready by 2014, is going to be actual jerseys for players. We'll be able to personalize them for your individual, uh, for, with your name, it'll have all our sponsors on it, so you can go to your next LAN or event, or, you know, school, or whatever, and have pride, you know, and just feel like, yeah, these are my sponsors, I'm a badass, I play on a team. It'll probably be about thirty to thirty-five bucks, they have not been finalized yet. Uh, we're also discussing discounts for A-Team members and, uh, competitive teams for League of Legends and Dota. And we're also going to be set up with a rebate program, where once we hit every, once we sell first fifty shirts, they're gonna give us twenty-five bucks specifically just to run tournaments, so it's gonna be a really good opportunity for all of us to raise some money and get some cool swag. I see a lot of stuff blowing up in the chat, go ahead and ask him some questions about t-shirts if you got them.
Okay, Mr. Morse, I have a question.
Go, Cube.
If we pay for twenty-two fifty, what shirts are we getting?
The, there is a sample, this is just a sample, it's a mock-up on the homepage and the slider, I'll actually, I'll show it to you here. This is a mock-up of the shirt that you're gonna get, on the front, it's gonna be our logo, Infinity Gaming on the right sleeve, or, I'm sorry, on the left sleeve. It is possible, once we finalize and we make our first order, we haven't finalized this, but we may be putting our additional spons, we may be putting our sponsors on this t-shirt as well, but that has not been finalized.
So those are the t-shirts we're paying for?
That's a, a mock-up of it, if you go to ownage.com, O-W-N-A-G, or, O-W-N-A-J.com, and go to their partner stores, you'll be able to, uh, see the quality of their work. They're basically gonna take our art and, you know, I don't know how to make a t-shirt, but they do, and that's, and that's why we're gonna enter a partnership with them. They'll also handle all of our customer service needs, shipping and everything, so i- it's very low maintenance for us, and we just sit there and make money.
Alright, I have a question. Are all of our Infinity shirts gonna be black, blue and white?
We do plan on running things by the commu- uh future adjustments that I will make to the store. I do plan on running at the very least past Leadership. Which Leadership has been working with me for the last month or two to get this up and running.
Because I remember like the first time I joined Infinity, like the first time I'm on forums, there's this like super sick logo for a t-shirt. That was floating around.
The one that was There's uh, there are, I've saved all of those and there's a folder in my on my computer that says Infinity Gaming Merchandise Ideas. Every single one of those t-shirts uh that was posted as an idea in the fall of two thousand twelve are still in archive. Uh, one of the ones I really want to bring out is one that Vampy made that is our logo, but it's all like antiqued. It's fucking cool.
Yeah, one of them was like black and green, that sort of guy was like the sickest thing I'd ever seen.
Alright, Eon had a question. I just see that. I'm sorry, Eon. What was your question? Would the people going to lands near the beginning of two thousand fourteen have top priority for the team jerseys when they pay? Yes, and that's one of the things that I was talking about. We're talking about, we'll be able to to have discount codes like promotion codes that we can have them turn on and turn off. So let's say we're running an event and we wanna really push our t-shirts and our gear, we can say, you know, just this weekend only, ten percent off, here's your discount code. We'll also be able to issue codes like that out to members of Leadership and the uh A-team competitive players that are going to lands and things like that.
Dumb question, uh, are you sure we're not getting names on these shirts?
On these shirts?
Because because like for SCA, like there's this twenty bucks and they have their name and OG's is twenty-two fifty and they have the name on the back. That's just something I looked at then.
Yeah, the place that's selling the shirts is, do they have any monograming abilities? Like, can I get shit that says the Graven is king?
The t-shirts in the backs and things like that will be able to be personalized. The uh the pricing that some of those teams are able to get is based upon volume. For example, if I'm putting out thirty shirts compared to somebody who's putting out a hundred and fifty shirts, obviously they're gonna get a discount. Uh, that's also one of the reasons why we're holding up on the back. We could, instead of having the sleeve, have it on the back, uh, in the mod forum. I talk more about the pricing and stuff, Atlas. Uh, if you'd like to go review that and help me in future decisions, I would love your feedback.
Eh, if we're just talking about places to play instead of the arm, how about like in the front, like on the bottom, like on the left, like right on the bottom of the shirt? Cuz that'd be sick.
This this shirt is all but finalized and it will be finalized once we have the money raised up and final decisions will come down from Leadership. I think we've taken enough time to talk about this. I just wanted to plug it real quick, do a little shameless thing. Uh, I think Vampy's ready though to uh continue on.
Yep, yep. Um, Coaching Department, you guys come up with anything?
We did not. We didn't even touch it.
We're touching it now.
There 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 there's a whole post on the forums about the resurrection of Coaching Department.
Like, I'm pretty sure I proved that.
It's my brainchild.
Will somebody go over that with me? I haven't read it, um, and I'm sure, cuz if I recall, that's in the that's in the mod lounge, isn't it?
Nope, general discussion. It was first in model lounge.
Oh, you guys already pulled it public. There you go.
Yeah.
Can After Vampy approved it, I went public.
Tell me about it.
Um, it's basically better than what Wave had. It's it's more
I took everything that Wave broke and made it better. I I I I'm sorry, but it's true.
Um, they have, uh, one thing that I liked or one major thing is that Infinity members get coaching free. They don't have to pay. Be ten dollars. There's a package as well. A link to the thingy. I just got, eh, I got, okay.
Alright, yeah, oh.
There you go. Um, there's packages. What else is there? EU has their own like different section as well, so you can get coaching, but Draclo has beside who he wants to put up for that. Actually, not really know many players in EU.
Basically, we have the groundwork. We just need coaches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Hacken, have you had a chance to read that post yet? Hacken? He's in here, isn't he?
Yeah, I I told Draclo to share with players.
Okay.
Uh, we'll see what else is there. Um
Like, like ba- basically, i- if you're a coach and you start starting to coach people. It's basically a fifty-fifty split down the middle whenever you get a client, um the basic package is like one hour and starting out ten dollars or eight euros. Basically, you take half, the community takes half to help upkeep things like TeamSpeak and website. Um and if we get good feedback on you as a coach and we see you bringing more clients, then we start to up your price. Like, say if you're hauling in like fifteen clients a month. Uh, we're obviously gonna up your price by five bucks at a time. So then you get a bigger slice. Like, you basically get more money for the good work you put off. Also, there are package deals in there which um give you also a bigger cut of the pie. Um the one-month package is basically like once a week coaching or two hours a week coaching. And you give them a few replay packs and builder notes. Ba- guys, i- i- it's all there on the forums. It's all laid out, nice and neat and it it it's 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 all laid out. We just need coaches.
Awesome. Well, I'll be sure to review that in my next major update to the webpage. Um, do you want me to put that on the Coaching tab?
Yes.
Alright.
Atlas, what's the benefits that I get being a coach when I
You're not gonna be a coach.
No, 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 no. Let's just put this in a situation. What would be the benefits that I'd be getting over soloing?
Okay.
You you would be contributing to the community?
Ask for ten bucks and people will pay me ten bucks.
Yeah, but okay, okay.
This is a way, uh, if I could take this, Cube.
Yeah, go.
Um, what you're what you're doing is, you're absolutely right, Cube. You could go out and you could, you know, solo and be the next Imba Coaching. The perk of partnering with us as a coach is you have immediate exposure to our four hundred and fifty players. And yeah, not all of them are active, but I mean, look at the numbers that we have. The EU side is maxed out on Clan. We're always having to cut people here in North America. There there's an immediate market for you as a coach. Yes, you're gonna be giving that out to the the people that are in the community uh for free when you have the time. But you're going to have an opportunity to expose yourself to tons of people and you're gonna have the peace of mind of knowing that you're not just doing it for yourself, you're helping the community grow, you're helping your friends get better. Which in turn is gonna help you get better because now your friends are better, so they're gonna be more challenging practice partners, et cetera. It it's, you have to look at it from a holistic point of view. And if you ever get into a discussion with somebody that's like, why should I be a coach? Um, you know, I would kinda turn the discussion that way and remind them that it's not about them, it's about the the greater community. It's a way for you to you know, put work in without being an admin, without running a tournament, without casting an event. Uh, it's just another way that you can help out and show that you love Infinity Gaming.
And like I said, like i- i- if like you, everything's fifty-fifty. The house takes half, you take half because the house is going to promote you on our social media. We're giving access, so we're gonna help keep the TeamSpeak up. Then i- i- if this all works, like the Coaching Department will be self-sufficient. It's gonna help finance tournaments, it's gonna help pay for the TeamSpeak. And if you're doing a good job as a coach and we're getting positive feedback from you and you're hauling in clients, the price for you starts to go up. You start making more money. Your name gets out there more and it 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 just goes full circle.
How good do you have to be at the game to be a ghost?
Master. There there there, okay, there was a problem with the last Coaching Department and I'm gonna say it straight up.
Please don't break me again.
No one is paying twenty bucks for a Platinum Terran coach. I'm sorry.
But he is GM, doesn't matter enough. Come on.
No, no, I think
Hey, guys, I this is not a witch hunt. I understand, a lot of, let's keep it focused.
But yeah, Master League players, um, we we reduced the price by half in the last Coaching Department, um for the last one, they wanted twenty dollars a lesson. We're going to ten dollars a lesson. Also, a lot of the coaching was outsourced to other teams. Um, that's something we're not doing with this. It's all in-house. And shh, there's something else I wanted to say.
And what if an outside player contacts the coach? Do you still split it with uh Infinity Gaming?
When you coach someone, you coach someone from the outside. It it it's not an internal coaching system, it's an external coaching system, meaning you you build clients, not
Yeah, the coaches, the coaches will be available to the community when they have time. You know, they, you know, I'm sure we'll leave it up to each coach to to maybe figure it out for themselves. Like, uh, for example, if I was gonna be a coach, I would probably be like, alright you know pardon me, maybe post something and say, hey, I got a couple hours free on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, anybody wants one-on-one coaching, message me. Otherwise, I'm gonna sit in on a B-team practice and Academy practice on Tuesday and Thursday. Shit like that. And and so you, as a member, will have access to them and be able to private message them and arrange your own things on a personal basis. Um, but the only time you would be charging is if it's somebody from outside the community.
I have a question. What if like, say you were a coach guy? What if like you're just chilling in TeamSpeak and like we're just sitting in TeamSpeak, we're talking like, hey, bro, coach me, I'm bad at game, help me out. Is that fine?
Please be respectful of everybody's time. And by that, I mean, I should clarify, I should clarify, just, you know, don't demand their time. Stuff like that is totally cool.
Uh, okay.
He's like wondering if coaches could give free time out to some players.
Well, we already we already kinda do that through the B-team open.
Yeah.
Um, basically what happens is somebody wins and I say, uh, lately it's been easy because they've been in-house. And I've just been able to go, go find a master player and tell them I said they have to coach you for an hour.
No, but but the but that's something we have had to discuss, like the e- like, say, okay, say if we say if I'm I'm gonna pull a name out of the sky, Jim is a Terran coach, okay? Jim's a Terran coach. And he's good at mech and I wanna go to him, learn mech builds. I'm not gonna fucking pay him ten dollars because he's my teammate. Like, if he has time to help me, he's gonna help me because that's just what we do. No, there is no in-house payment. There is no in-house payment.
It's free.
Because that's not the part of a team, like basically, just imagine you're at team practice and you just go to someone else and ask for help. Yeah, it's like Coaching Department is for it's awesome.
That was a motorcycle.
Basically, the Coaching Department is sold to members who are not part of Infinity, okay? Let's say Jimmy Jong is on Team DBK and he wants to be coached by Jim, then he pays Jim.
I like it. Do you guys even have the exchange rate figured out?
I I I I don't understand what you're saying, Iconic.
I said, you guys even have the uh the conversion figured out?
No, 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 no. Iconic, not Morse.
Oh.
No. I I I I don't understand what you're saying. Clearly, you're not understanding what I'm saying.
Okay, let's say Shiggy right here, he's Master League Zerg. Let's say he's, he starts coaching. Now, why would he do it through Infinity Gaming rather than just do it by himself? He said, oh, well, he can do it because there's like four hundred people in here that he gets to coach, but that's not really something that's lucrative for anyone. So in the end, it comes down to him just basically giving coaching and then making a donation of half his coaching. Because he's not really receiving any service or anything in return. So what it comes down to is basically just coaching and coaches make donations. That's what it feels like, but there's no no system, it's just that.
I would suggest you go and read the forum post because you're 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 missing something. Okay?
I I get what he's saying. No, I I'm getting what Iconic's saying, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Iconic. You're you're basically saying the where's the benefit of the the community being behind you as a coach? Because the community, you're you're not gonna make any money off of the community, right?
Yeah, like
If we're
The point of this whole program.
Okay, so I I get the point you're making. You're you're looking at it from a business point of view and that's one of the reasons it's it's important to have town halls and so we can look at it through you know, different facets of the gym, if you will. The the bonus of that is, uh, and this is actually something that I was gonna ask. When you're, let me, actually, let Atlas Vampy, let me ask you this question first. I don't see it at a glance. How long do you have to be a member of the community before you get the, you know, the coaches' free time?
Yeah, but that's the thing, like Shiggy's just my friend, for example.
Because as it is right now, they have to be a forum member just to check out the post.
Morse, shut up.
Okay.
Okay, if you I I, okay.
No, take your time, bud.
Okay, let's say for example, if Spec was a coach, okay? Spec, I okay, I'm reswitching. I I wanna learn Zerg. And let's say Spec is a coach and I go to Spec and I say, hey, can you help me out? It's just like going to someone who isn't a coach and saying, hey, can you help me out? It's just a teamwork thing, okay?
Yes.
It 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 still works the same thing as it did before.
That's not the point at all. I understand that.
I I, well, I don't understand the question at all.
Well, Atlas, what he's what he's saying is how is that model profitable? And one of the que- and the question that I have is how long does somebody have to be a member of the community before we're gonna ask our masters, you know, for example, if somebody just, what what's keeping somebody from seeing their coaching? Knowing that it's twenty-five bucks an hour and then joining our team for a week or two just to get a couple, three hours of a master's time and then pop out?
I agree. I think it should be a month.
Is that kind of a
I think three months would be suitable, like
Just like we have for Leadership?
Like, get to be old enough, like, get to be old enough in the community to be able to apply for Leadership.
I think I don't think it's too long because at that point, you sort of like say, it's it's harder to pu- uh, it's harder to get into the plan, you know?
I would be fine with something like thirty days.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, thirty days or something.
Let's keep in mind, this all comes down to uh to Vampy and uh and Atlas, of course, but I think these are some good points that uh they should probably take into consideration.
I just think there should be a difference between becoming a leader of the clan to being, hey, bro, I know we're friends, but I have to pay you to teach me how to play shit? You know?
Well, then how do you separate the difference from coaching from some guy in random clan chats? Like, and how do you defeat this? Wouldn't that be considered coaching?
No, but like if it's in clan, like if I'm going to like, say I was gonna help fucking Cube do something. Like, I know I'm not a coach, but you do. Like, I'm not gonna charge Cube because Cube and me
No, there is no in-game charging. No one's gonna charge in-game.
Alright, alright, alright. I'm I'm cutting this conversation off right now. Um, go read the forum post. At the very end, I say, if you have questions, ask it now, okay? Go read the forum post. If you have a question, ask it there. Because there are things that everyone's not understanding because you haven't read everything, okay? So go do that now, please.
Why would anyone pay like mid to low masters twenty-five fucking bucks an hour instead of just going in the forum for ten bucks? Just instead of just going into an in-game chat channel and asking a masters if they could help them out for free, and I bet like eighty percent would do it. Why would anyone pay for low masters coaching?
There's a difference from coaching and then, eh, bro, how do I beat this? Or you do this?
Yeah, but you can still ask anyway. There's not even a big difference. I would, if anyone asked me in-game if I can coach them, I would fucking do it for free. That's the point.
Alright, guys, that's enough on the Coaching Department. Nope. Now, eh, everyone, everyone has some different thoughts. We've been, we're past our two-hour mark, um, and then some. I do want this conversation to continue. Atlas is heading this program up. He's going to want feedback and we're going to want to develop this. It's an idea. And if it ends up being something that's not working, then we'll just dismantle it like we did the last time we tried to do a Coaching Department. So please chime in on the forum post. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna post the link one more time here in TeamSpeak. And chime in there and let's start a conversation about it and let's get some things solidified and rock and roll. I'm gonna go ahead and take the floor back. Oh, I switched chairs cuz I'm lazy. I forgot about that. Ah, alright.
Throw it out the window.
So, no, I, I actually, I like, I drug my, I drug my regular, like, sitting chair, ah. Alright. So, um, thank you very much, uh, everybody for showing up. Thank you for watching this, if you're watching it on the bot. Uh, I'm Infinity Gaming's Morse. I really appreciate you guys tuning in and chiming in. Uh, that's off to all the community members who were a part of the conversation, taking some time out of their Saturday. And helping us move forward. And just a reminder, hit that donate button, hit that follow button, hit that like button, give us your support, uh. Either by PayPal or through social media. Either ways, awesome. We enjoy it all. And yeah, I'm just gonna cut it here. You can check us out at infgaming.net if you just stumbled upon this and we've got a free TeamSpeak server. Come hang out with us, chat. Talk to you later.